Welcome to tonight's city council meeting, City of Covington, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Lewis?
Here.
Councilman Botford?
Here.
Councilman Roberts?
Here.
Councilman Inman?
Councilman Verret?
Here. Please stand. We will have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. With parish councilman District Two, Honorable Larry Rowling, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Following our agenda this evening, we will begin with the swearing in of a new councilman at large. I would ask Rod Roderick to stand and assist, and my council clerk, Joanne Rucker.
I, Mark Verret.
I, Mark Verret.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As councilman at large for the City of Covington.
As councilman at large for the City of Covington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, let me first say to the people, citizens and businesses of Covington, it did not go unnoticed by me and a few others that I was able to run unopposed for this position. And I can tell you that I always use this quote, but too much of a person is given, much is expected. And I intend to do everything pretty much the same way I've been doing it. That you're supposed to laugh or chuckle or something on that. But honestly, it is, I am humbled to be on the council as councilman at large. And with that being said, I also want to thank my fellow council members because it is their trust, I think, that puts me in this position as well. And the council clerk, Ms. Joanne Rucker. Somebody referred to her a couple of days ago as seasoned, but I can tell you that from me being from South Louisiana, I like that. So, without further ado, and hoping that I didn't jinx it, I would ask that we get a motion, a nomination for the next council president.
So moved.
I will need a second.
Second.
And I'm assuming that is me. Correct?
That is correct.
Can you vote, please?
The only possibility.
I can. Roll call, please.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
And again, the confidence and trust that the people have and this council. I have a tendency to joke around, but I think it's because I like to work hard and I like to play hard. And I think we're going to do both in the next few years. So now, we have an up here. We tried to get rid of him, but he came back. I would like to call the parish councilman Larry Rowling. And as he walks up, I will remind him from this side of the podium dice, whatever you want to call it, that you have to give us your full name, your address, and limit your remarks to two minutes. But all kidding aside, all kidding aside, we'll greet you another minute. Welcome home.
Thank you, councilman and president of the council, and all of our council members. Thank you very much. My name is Larry Rowling. I live at two-two-six West Twenty-Second Avenue. That beautiful house on the corner with the columns and a nice porch right there. Oh, okay, it is. But anyway, that being said, no, thank you so much. And again, I love every one of you. You know that in administration. I thank you so much. Anyway, the reason why I'm here today is for two things. Number one, as the new parish councilman for District Two, the City of Covington pretty much is my entire district, so I'm very proud of that. I'll be very familiar with that since two thousand and eleven. So I wanted to let you know I'm here for you. If you need me, my email for the parish council is LRowling@STPGOV.org. And obviously, your seasoned clerk will know how to get in touch with me if needed, or if you need my cell number, but that email is working. I've already gotten a bunch of emails. But anyway, that being said. So look, I'm here tonight to talk about the season that's coming. And I know the Fools had that big event this weekend at the Southern Hotel. Very well attended, I must say, for the twelfth night, and they did a great job on that. I was glad to be there on behalf of the Carnival in Covington Parade and Crew of Bogofalaya. So I wanted to just go through a little bit of what's going to happen this year on the Mardi Gras Day Experience. Because as I know, sitting up there before, as a councilman, you know, the citizens count on you for information. So I wanted you to know about what was going to go on. But I'm going to give you a little history really quick. Our Carnival in Covington Board was created in two thousand and seventeen. And we wanted to change the experience of the Carnival experience in Covington. And back then in two thousand and sixteen, Mayor Mike Cooper approached me wanting to see if there was a way for us to re-enhance it somehow and help the Lions Club. So after working with the Lions Club for three seasons and seeing the results of the larger crowds, our vision in changing the Mardi Gras experience changed a little bit different than maybe the previous parade. So that being said, our vision was more based on the business community being involved, focusing on a safe environment and a family-friendly environment, but also giving our businesses a boost in the whole City of Covington, which I think it has had. And again, giving back to our local nonprofits, because every year we do award, usually we pick a grand marshal that's involved with a nonprofit, and we'll give them like a thousand-dollar check to go to that nonprofit. So we're very proud of that. So that being said, our vision was always having a traditional float parade, also bands, Mardi Gras groups, and a strong membership. So this year, I'm proud to say, we're going to have twenty traditional floats, marching groups, bands, six hundred riding members coming down the streets of Covington. And that parade again is February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And the title of our parade is School Days in the Mardi Gras Haze. After making historic strides, and as the public looked at this parade, still the Lions Club organization or the Covington Parade, we felt like we did not have our own identity. So what we did earlier this year is we started to kind of do some research on what name would be set to really go forward with this Mardi Gras parade. And some of you know, some of you don't. I know this is being taped, so hopefully the citizens will find out. But what we did is we went to the past to find out really what happened in the eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds. And we found this. The first celebrated Mardi Gras was in eighteen seventy-nine on Lundigrav. That was a Monday before Mardi Gras, as everybody knows, when the King of Carnival of Covington arrived on the Bogofalaya River at the Columbia Street Landing, greeted by their city officials, the citizens, and basically, second line to the Southern Hotel where the mayor at the time toast the king. And basically, the celebration started for the next two days. That being said, as we did this research, we thought, what a great name than put the Crew of Bogofalaya. It's historical, it's traditional. And that being said, we are now the Crew of Bogofalaya. It's just a rebranding and just a new name. I know I'm past my time. If I can just get another minute, I would really appreciate it. I could feel it. I could feel it.
Good. There's a lot of absence up here, so I mean.
Okay, so I'm almost finished. But anyway, I just wanted to announce, you know, Mardi Gras Day is going to start February thirteenth. But we're going to bring that Lundigrav experience back this year as a tradition. So at four P.M. at Bogofalaya Park, our grand marshal, Grayheart Perkins, is going to be our grand marshal this year, with a setting grand marshal for this city. And we get a second line to the Southern Hotel where the mayor will do a proclamation and also toast our grand marshal. And we're going to have a celebration inside the Southern Hotel, open to the public, free champagne and king cake for everybody. So that's going to happen on February twelfth. So that being said, I know the Mardi Gras season is just beginning. I think the City of Covington has grown their Mardi Gras, and again, we want everybody to enjoy it, the citizens to enjoy it. You as councilmen can go out there, talk about it. And are we going to have historic crowds again this year? And I think the weather, of course, is going to play a part on everything. We've just been very blessed for the last two years. So that being said, just wanted to go ahead and tell you what was going on in that regard. But I thank you for the time, and I appreciate you.
Let me tell you what, leadership on this phenomenal. I think it's going to be great. Talking about twenty floats, six hundred-plus members. It's going to be hard to beat last year, but I think you're on the track.
Yes.
Council comments?
May I?
And Mayor Earl comments?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank parish councilman Rowling and also Amy Tucker. The two of them have put in countless hours over the past few years to invigorate the Mardi Gras Day experience in Covington. They've really done a great job and brought a lot of pride and community back into the City of Mardi Gras Day. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. And Amy has worked so hard on this. So yes, indeed.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks. And kudos to you is that I actually have some clients that were in from Alaska. And they said that they attended last year, and they've been to the ones at Mardi Gras in New Orleans and everything. And they said, what a breath of fresh air Covington is. They come here, it's family-oriented, it's a good time, everybody gets along, and it's a great event. And so, not only.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
In Louisiana, they know you all the way to Alaska.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Keep Covington rolling.
Yes, indeed. We'll still do that. But if you need me, you know how to get in touch with us. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Looking forward to Mardi Gras. St. John Folsom Miss Rule said it's legal to eat king cake, so please go out and buy as much as you can. The consent calendar, regular meeting minutes, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. And we have an introduction of item number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-one dash zero-one, which is an ordinance of the City of Covington authorizing the lease of a portion of square four, Division of St. John. I need a motion to accept the consent calendar.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
On the regular agenda, we have no unfinished business and no items to be voted on or items for discussion. But under new business, we have items removed from the consent calendar. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-one, a proclamation of the Covington City Council calling a special election. We have two vacancies, District E and councilman at large. And I would ask if the public has any comments to please come forward. Seeing none, I would ask if the council has any comments. I will need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
A second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Now that we have called for the election, we need to have interim appointments. We will begin with resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-two, which is a resolution of the Covenant City Council councilperson at large. And I would like to call upon Councilman Roberts at this point.
Thank you, council president. I feel like I need some intro music playing because he just walked in. So when I was asked to, you know, I ran, there was somebody had to be interim before I was here. And we were honored to have Diane Weiss come in. And then we've done it again, and then this opportunity happens yet again. And so, she's the first, it's like in flashing lights whenever this happens, let's see if Diane can come. And so I call her. I praised her as much as possible, and she specifically said, flattery will get you everywhere. So I was like, so with no introduction needed, I just want to say that she agreed to do this. It is definitely a benefit to Covington to have Diane Weiss sit on this microphone again and guide us to what we do. She's been there, done that, and has been a wonderful servant to Covington. So thank you, Diane.
For our council comments?
Yes. Diane, welcome back. It's great, especially in that position that you've served before at large. As you know, it comes with a lot of responsibility, and it's a sign of leadership. And I think with your experience that you've had in the past, you'll be welcome and fit right in. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Thank you for coming back. I enjoyed your last time, and we really enjoyed the gift you gave us.
So to make it official, we need to make a vote, and I would ask that y'all approve Diane Weiss's interim councilwoman.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes. And so the public knows and recognizes and understands that Diane will assume office on February first, but feel free to call her with any complaints early. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-three, a resolution of the Covenant City Council appointing Susan Bonnet Bourgeois as the interim councilwoman in District E. Susan has been instrumental in most nonprofit organizations in our city. She serves presently under the Board of Adjustment, and I think she would be an excellent interim. And with that being said, I'll ask the public if they have any comments. And with there being none, I would ask to see if the council has any comments.
Actually, I'll take my council hat off real quick, put my nonprofit hat on. Susan's amazing. And it is a benefit again to us to have her on this council. So I am highly appreciative that she agreed to do this to fill in the vacancy. So thank you.
I will go ahead and ask motion to accept, and I'll ask for a second.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-four, a resolution of the Covenant City Council authorizing the use of an unconstructed portion of South Washington Street. That has been given to the fellow council members if they have any questions. But it's a really straightforward, unconstructed portion that they are requesting. The administration does not have any objection, and it has also been looked at by various department heads to see if there's any objection. With that being said, I would ask if the public has any comments to come forward. And with there none, does the council have any comments or questions? Then I would ask a motion to accept.
So moved.
And I would ask for a second.
Second.
And I would ask for a roll call.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-six, a resolution of the Covington City Council confirming the appointment of Cecil Hudson as the District C appointment.
Nope.
Well, Cecil, we trying to get to you quicker. Yeah, you see that, Larry? You won. You can leave now. Number five, resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-five, a resolution of the Covenant City Council authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with St. Tammany Parish for cleaning of a portion of Rattlesnake Branch. Councilman Roberts?
Absolutely. So I've gotten a lot of phone calls about some debris that's in Rattlesnake Branch. It's outside of what we would do because Rattlesnake Branch is a parish scenario. And so, in order for us to get this moved and work together, we need to make a cooperative endeavor agreement. So that is what all this is. Pretty straightforward. I just like, again, gives us an opportunity to have hands-on as well as working with the parish to get things completed. I didn't know if Aaron had anything to add to that.
My understanding, Jim O'Barry met with Wally at the parish. My understanding is that the scope of work is to use a spider machine to go down the center. Private property should not be impacted, and it should only take a day or so.
Right.
So it's a very simple project. The other thing is that this cooperative endeavor agreement does not assume any ongoing maintenance or ownership, either for the parish or for the city. This is simply just to go and get it cleaned up, move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any further council comment?
I do have one. Aaron, have we ever found the, or do we have an agreement like this for Mile Branch?
Yes, we have an agreement with Mile Branch for slope stabilization. And we are waiting for design documents to look at with the parish. They are in charge of that project. They are the project manager.
The parish is? So I need to get Larry for that?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right. I need a motion to accept.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-six, a resolution of the Covenant City Council confirming the appointment of Cecil Hudson as the District C appointment to the Covington Planning and Zoning Commission to fill an unexpired term. Councilman Roberts?
Absolutely. So Mr. Hanson, who was here, who was graciously part of the P and Z, moved. He is outside of District C and had to step down. My job is to find somebody who would fill that void and be able to distinguish the good and the bad with what happens on a planning and zoning commission. And so Cecil has been in District C for years. We have had a good relationship. He understands the jargon and the lingo that comes with construction and building and planning and zoning. And again, I trust his opinion on things. I would lean on him to say what is good and what's bad. One of the conversations that came to me was, because he's a builder, does he have to recuse himself from certain conversations if he's building in that district? The answer is absolutely yes. We have a city attorney who monitors that constantly. So I trust that all good decisions are being made. I just ask for you guys' support in appointing Cecil to planning and zoning.
The public have any comments? Cecil, would you like to say a few words before the vote? It's best to do it after, I can assure you. All right. Council comments?
Yeah, I just have, I've seen a lot of things that Cecil's done for our community, and I really appreciate it. I know he cares about our community, not just District C. I know he cares about all of Covington. So you're very welcome on our board. Thank you.
Yeah, just want to welcome you aboard, and let us know if you need any help.
Cecil, glad that you're offering yourself, and I think it's a cast of characters on planning and zoning, including those that go before planning and zoning. I think it'll be educational. I think it'll be fun. But more importantly, I think you have the skills to do very well at it. And with that, I will make a motion to accept and ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes. Congratulations. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-seven, a resolution of the Covington City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with St. Tammany Parish Fire District Number One for dispatch services for the Covenant Fire Department. Councilman Botford?
Yes, I believe that this originated back in the Cooper era when he brought this around. And from what I understand, it's that, you know, we just have to have this formalized. I think they do a great service. If you've never been to the nine-one-one center at District One over there, you should definitely go take a tour of it. It's amazing. They do a fantastic job. And I think it also helps that it kind of puts all the different fire districts all on the same page. So I think it's a really great benefit to Covington. Yes.
Anyone from the public would like to make a comment? City administration?
The cost for the services, for the dispatch services, was included in the two thousand and twenty-four budget that you approved. And so, per chief blocker, this is just a resolution that the organization needs for their files. The agreement is not sufficient. They need a resolution to go with it.
Any further council comments?
No.
I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
We will now go to comments and reports from the individual council districts, beginning with District A, Councilman Lewis.
All right. First, I would just want to say thank you to all the workers. I was riding around the city today, and I was able to see a few workers from Public Works. I was cleaning out all ditches so that the water can flow. It was very good to see, not good to see you guys out there, but I was glad to see everybody out there working and getting the ditches clean. Of course, thanks to fire and police for keeping the city safe. Good to see our president up there doing his job.
Thank you, sir.
I want to remind everybody to register to vote. We've got two elections coming up this year, one in March and one in November. And Uptown Covington is doing good. People are joining forces. They're paying attention. We're holding meetings. We're having events, positive events for the community. One of them is a wine tour of Italy, starting Saturday, January thirteenth at one P.M. One-eight-eight-two North Causeway Boulevard in Mandeville. That'll be at Total Wine. If you want more information, contact Ashley Marissa. There's a third annual Mardi Gras Ball that will be held at the Castine Center on February twenty-fourth, seven P.M. For more information, call nine-eight-five-five-nine-zero-oh-nine-nine-seven. And on January fourteenth, we will kick off our annual MLK program. This year, we'll be doing a service day on Sunday, January fourteenth, starting at one o'clock. The first event will be, we will be feeding fifty elderly residents in the area. We'll be giving them hot meal, all free. We just ask everybody to sign up so we know the head count and where to deliver the meals. The second event, we will be doing some beautification projects around the two stores, I Stop and Mike's Store. We'll be building some flower pots and planting some flowers for the upcoming season. We are asking for any donations that can help with that, or laborers that can maybe help with building those. Our next event, of course, will be the next day. We will be breaking the silence. That's our theme this year, January the fifteenth. Starting at nine forty-five, we will line up at Peter Atkins Park. We will roll with the I Have a Dream Parade. From there, ending at the Furman Auditorium, starting at twelve o'clock, we will start with our program. Our lineup for the program, of course, is awesome this year. Our mistress of ceremony will be Ms. Tatiana Begat. We will have our community choir from the city, Dr. Angela Bazell, S Choir, musical by Justin Rendell, saxophone player. And our keynote speaker will be Pastor Mallory Callahan, and a few other things. We have some, of course, our awards ceremonies that we started a few years back. We will give to community service people of the community. So we're asking everybody to come out, enjoy yourself. Everyone's welcome. We hope to see everybody from the city there, as many as possible, and come out and celebrate a wonderful person who paved the way for everybody. That's it.
Thank you, Peter. District B?
All right, thank you. I just want to start off with the updates for the food bank. They served eight hundred and eighty-four households, a total of one thousand and thirty-two boxes. And they had fifty-two new registrations in the month of December. The food program updates, they're excited to announce that they're working with Good Sam's in Slidell for an additional distribution for the North Shore Food Bank, allowing them to reach the East St. Tammany people, make it easier for them. They've also added two new sites to our kids' weekend food program, which is Whispering Forest Elementary in Slidell, and Boys and Girls Club at Pineview Middle in Covington. That's good to hear. It's there now in four schools, also including Brock, Alton, and Chataima. January and February are always their slowest times, so if there's any businesses or people or neighborhoods that are doing type of Mardi Gras events or whatever, please do a food drive to help out the food bank. Their events, they like to thank the City of Covington for all of its support and putting together their Christmas tree kickoff. Also, their golf tournament will be Tuesday, May fourteenth, at Beauchamp, and they have a few events in the works that they will be sharing with us soon. January's most needed items are cereal, Jiffy Mix, soup, ravioli, dry beans, mac and cheese, and oatmeal. I just want to remind everybody to shop local Wednesdays at the trailhead for the farmer's market, and then on Saturdays, right here behind the building. Just a note for our porch fest for the Hope House, we raised a total of eight thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. So that's awesome. Really good year. Appreciate all the businesses and all the sponsors that we had. Public Works, fantastic job. And Jim, surprised you're here. Surprised you're not napping. I think he was up till about midnight last night out there taking care of things. That's awesome. Also, with the street division, I had a resident reach out to me about Covington Point. They said they had. They said they had a massive pothole. Just what happened, I caught them on that day, and Jim and Charlie put the board out and got that pothole fixed. The residents are very happy about that. Speeding in Covington, it's everywhere. It's not just one subdivision, it's all over Covington. People, please slow down. Last thing we want is a kid or, you know, someone to get hit, or pedestrian, that'd be a terrible thing. Just take a few extra minutes, please. Also, I'd like to say to be aware of the weather next week. It's going to be like down to teens, so Peter, you might want to wait to plant those plants until like the following week or something, because they're not going to make it. And that's it for District B.
Thank you, sir. District C?
Yeah, thank you very much. First, let me just say congrats.
Council President?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you doing what you're doing. Cecil, thank you very much again. And Ms. Diane, thank you again. I appreciate y'all answering the call when I do call, so I really do appreciate the world of you guys. And speaking of thanks, today is National Law Enforcement Day, so I don't like to favor anybody, but Chief Farrell, I want to say thank you for everything you do. Man, you guys are amazing, so. Again, I always call it a faceless job because they put on a uniform every day and they risk their lives to protect us in everything they do, so thank you guys for doing it, and please tell your guys thank you as well. The Michelle Patricia drainage scenario that's been happening, it looks like it's almost complete. I want to just say thank you to Callie, our engineer for the city. She has been wonderful communicating where we are in the process, what's going on, and how much work is left to do. It looks like it's basically done, pretty close to finish. And then last night's rain, and again, I'll echo what District A and District B said, last night's rain gave us an opportunity to kind of see where some additional flooding is, areas of concern, but this morning I woke up and the first thing I see is one of the city employees out there getting leaves out of the ditch so that we can still have some drainage. And so it's just a blessing. I get to run out and get in my truck and stay warm and drive to work, and these guys are in the cold doing what they do, so kudos to those guys getting out there and getting it done for us again. But some of the areas of concern that came up, and I had quite a few emails this morning because drainage or whatever, Lurleen in front of apartments still, Autumn Woods at Barclay Park, 15th and Patricia, all areas that kind of still hold water. I will say this, though, as much as they held water, it drained just as fast. So it's good to see some progress, there's still areas to work on, but I think it's the nature of what Covington is, flatlands. We're always going to have some drainage issues somewhere, it's how do you micromanage all of it? And so kudos to the city for constantly addressing it. And then lastly, Councilman Enman's not here, I know he's ill, I just want to wish him well and hope to see him soon.
Thank you. District D, Mr. Enman, Councilman Enman isn't feeling well, and so we do wish him to feel better soon. Talking about the police and the fire and Public Works, let me echo, this past weekend, we had the St. John Fools of Misrule 12th Night. It is amazing to me, because I happen to be co-captain, at times it's a good thing, at times it may not be, but I am literally amazed at the coordination and the cooperation of the department heads, the employees, the city administration. How many times do I get to say, we live in a great place? And to me, that event was very nice. You're talking about, it's dark, you're blocking off streets, and I don't think people had more fun this year, or they had more fun this year than they can possibly remember. So kudos to the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works. And look, I know this is going to be a little different with me, the way I have fun, but it is also, we can have fun and do a good job at the same time, and I genuinely believe that. I have done my law career that way, I've treated my family the same way, and I'm going to treat this the same way. Let's keep Covington rolling. Now, with that being said... Mr. Mayor?
It's the same, only different. I'd like to, I'd like to start off by congratulating the St. John's Fools of Misrule from something they started, I think it was about 13 years ago, as a, just a kind of a community club that may or may not have a drinking problem, but they certainly have a wonderful time. And it has really grown now into a signature event for the city of Covington, with the addition every year of the Fire Twirlers, and then the Stilt Walkers, and this and that, and then this year, they brought in the Wild Magnolias from New Orleans. So just congratulations to the fools. Last night, as it's been alluded to, we had a rainstorm of about five and a half inches in a short, very short period of time. Our drainage system functioned quite well, very well, and the credit for that, as some of the councilmen have mentioned, goes to Public Works. You mentioned seeing workers out there today cleaning, but what we also know is that they were out there yesterday and the day before, prior to the storm, hitting key places. They have a list of knowing areas such as West St. Mary, East St. Mary, Inspiration, which have no fall, they're just flat. And so just a little bunch of leaves can cause a big problem, and they're out there cleaning those ditches, cleaning those catch basins in River Forest. Big shout out to those residents in River Forest that adopt a catch basin. You have families, the Public Works Department cannot do this by themselves when you look at the number of culverts across the city and the number of catch basins. So kudos to River Forest residents that each have said, I'll take this catch basin. We do ask that when you clean it out, that you not put the leaves right next to it, because then they just wash right back into it. I'd like to remind everyone that our drainage system primarily is directed to the Shafunkta River, and that would be the St. Paul's Lateral Canal, Simpson Creek, Mile Branch, Blue Swamp Creek, and Rattlesnake. All of those cut across our city and go into the Shafunkta. Once the Shafunkta River is full to its banks, those tributaries will cease to flow. They will start to back up, and they will become full. Once that happens, the lateral ditches of the city, whether it be in the West 20s or the West 30s, Patricia and River Forest, wherever it is, they will no longer flow into the lateral canals. And when Mile Branch or Patricia Canal decreases in water level by one inch, that's when that street or ditch is going to decrease by one inch. Very, very apropos for Autumn Woods in Barclay Park, where the level of the bottom of the ditch and the lower part of the yards is equal to the top of Blue Swamp Creek. Once Blue Swamp Creek leaves its banks, it's going to flow through a couple of our residents' yards, and their yards actually become part of Blue Swamp Creek. Thankfully, FEMA and the federal government has done a phenomenal job in calculating exactly what height you must raise your house to, and none of those homes, interestingly, have ever flooded. And so you might see this terrible water washing around them, but they've never flooded. As a matter of fact, in the floods that we've had, structures that were flooded, it's interesting to note that they were built on ground level in a flood zone. None of our other structures are really flooding, and that is our number one priority as a city, is keeping water out of structures. Number two priority is keeping the streets clear for emergency vehicles. Number three is yard flooding, the least important, and when the yards flood, that's basically just detention, waiting for those lateral canals to go down. And our fourth and lowest priority is, after the rain, we're going to have some ditches that hold water just because they have no fall. But overall, our drainage system performed admirably last night, and again, kudos to Public Works because they put a lot of work into it over the past couple of years. The last four years have been interestingly difficult. For the city administration, the pandemic presented a plethora of challenges in scheduling, payroll, personnel, and policy. Hurricane Ida blew our city to smithereens, and after the cleanup, left us with thousands of pages of bureaucratic audits that continue to this day as we try to recoup the millions of dollars we spent on debris removal. I believe we've gotten that number down to a quarter of a million?
Yes.
We've actually gotten it down to a quarter of a million, battling through that slog. A Russian hack of our computer system brought in the Secret Service, the National Guard, the state police, state homeland security, federal homeland security. With each of these disasters, our city has not only overcome, but has done so in exemplary fashion. Much of the credit for our success in battling COVID, cleaning up Ida, and rebuilding our IT better today than it was two years ago, belongs squarely on the leadership of this administration. Of course, I'm talking about our Chief Administrative Officer, Erin Bavona. This week marks Erin's fourth year anniversary with the city. She's been a guiding light during the times of darkness. She has the ability to examine bureaucratic and governmental slog and narrow it down to the essence of efficient process. She has established a theme within the administration department that their job is to ensure the success of the other departments, fire, police, Public Works, which in turn leads to those, to a theme in those departments, that city government's overall mission is to improve the quality of life of our residents. Both of those two themes are evident in our city today largely because of Erin, and she does it all with a smile. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in acknowledging our Chief Administrative Officer for the past four years, Erin Bavona.
Erin, would you like to say a few words?
That was unexpected, but thank you very much. It's been a wonderful four years, I have to say. I was telling somebody recently how much I love working for Covington. You know, I had 15 years in government before this, and I love that when we do something here in Covington, you know who it's impacting immediately. You know these people from being in the community, you can reach out and touch them, you know they're neighbors. It's a very rewarding job, so thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Another round of applause. Rod, any major legal issues? Good. With that being said, the next city council meeting will be Tuesday, February 6th, here in the council chambers. Hope to see you, and Ms. Diane and Ms. Susan will join us. Adjourned.